Comments when we get to the rights away. So that was the reason I signed in. And that's all. Thank you.
All right. Doug, you're next.
Thank you.
Welcome. Appreciate everybody waiting for us to finish off our last meeting.
I'm Doug Ranceth, 21220 Fondue Avenue North in Forest Lake. I want to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to address you tonight on behalf of the Clear Lake Association. I'm the president of the association and you have funded us for a number of years and I want to give you a report on how we have been spending your money and a request will come at the end. The agenda, I just wanted to go over a little bit about our membership, some of the activities we're involved with, our CARP program, our Eurasian water milfoil program, and some water quality issues we've been dealing with. I'll talk about our 2018 Eurasian water milfoil program and during it I'll talk about some of our partners. Okay. All right. With the advent of Eurasian water milfoil on the lake in 2009, it kind of revived our organization. And we have had fairly constant membership of about 80% of our homeowners on the lake as members over the last 10 years. This year, we have 118 members or about 80% of the people who live on the lake. We charge $15 in dues, which we have since the beginning of the organization. We also ask our members to contribute to an offshore fund to participate in our Eurasian water milfoil control program. About 90% of our members contribute $50 a year to the program. They also, we also offer the opportunity to treat the shorelines for Eurasian water milfoil, but they have to participate in the offshore program in order to be eligible to participate in the shoreline program. So, over the last 10 years, our members have contributed 162,000-plus to help us control Eurasian water milfoil. Some of the activities, other activities we're involved in. This year, 2017 and 2018, we started a CARP program to determine if there were sufficient CARP in the lake to warrant a removal program. We partnered with Rice Creek Watershed District and with CARP Solutions, which is a spinoff of the University of Minnesota's AIS program. They went out, we did some electrofishing and determined that we indeed have a CARP population that would warrant removal efforts. The association paid for radio transmitters and we put radio transmitters and 10 CARP. CARP tend to aggregate in the wintertime, so once you find the 10 CARP, you find all their friends with them in a small area in the winter. And earlier this month, a commercial fisherman went out to get the fish, had problems with the nets, didn't get any fish. And so, that's the second time that's happened and the likelihood is that he's not going to want to come back to Clear Lake again to go fishing. So at any rate...
Problem with the nets was because of something in the lake?
Well, he thinks that the nets hung up, there were some spear fishermen and they cut a big block of ice and they push it under the ice and it floats up underneath the ice. He thinks that his nets caught on that and they spent the afternoon trying to get the nets out. And so, last time they did it, they tore a hole in the nets, but they got 50,000 pounds of CARP out anyway. This time, they weren't able to do it and he spent a day really for nothing. We don't pay them, they kind of do it at their own risk and so probably is not interested in coming back. So, our next step with this then, part of our CARP study program is an aging study where they, we took 50 CARP, they remove an ear bone, slice it, count the rings, and they can tell how old they are. If we have an aged, an old, it helps us determine if there's a young breeding population of CARP. And if there is, then with Rice Creek, we're going to determine what we can do to disrupt their reproduction. That's our CARP program. Water quality, if you recall, we spoke to the council back when the city center was being built and encouraged the council to do the water, the stormwater runoff treatment program in one phase. We supported that project through speaking with Rice Creek for the, in support of the grant. That was a great program and it was in place. Last year, we supported the water quality structure that was put in under Forest Road. We spoke to the board of managers of the Rice Creek Watershed District for that and we also contributed $5,000 to that program. The new 11th Avenue water quality study, we're supportive of that. It will help to reduce the water, the runoff volume that flows into Clear Lake and we said that we would commit to providing some financial support for that as well. The association pays for a trash receptacle at the DNR access. We conduct the spring ice cleanup and we have members that go out during the year and pick up after the fishermen. July 4th, we have a boat parade that is very popular on the lake. So those are some of the activities. The biggest one is that Eurasian water milfoil program. And we've treated Eurasian water milfoil every year since 2009 with the exception of 2011, when the state government shut down. We have a partnership with Rice Creek Watershed District. They provide us with vegetation surveys through Blue Water Science. They create our treatment maps. They do water quality studies on the lake. They're an excellent partner. We have conducted field trials on various treatments with Minnesota DNR and Washington County now has provided funding the last three years. We've treated as many as 71 acres for milfoil and that was in 2012 and we've treated as few as 18 and that was 2016. Last year, we saw a resurgence of milfoil. We treated 37 and a half acres. We have an issue with funding because Minnesota Department of Natural Resources is no longer providing aquatic invasive species grants. They gave all their money for that to the counties and now the counties are administering it and it's a much more difficult process than it was previously under the DNR. They've also added a lot of extra administrative costs with 82 counties now administering the program. So at any rate, we have participated in the Washington County grant program the last three years. It requires submitting a proposal, doing a presentation to their selection panel and we have received grants 2016, 17, and we have received a $7,000 grant this year. We are, in the last two proposals, we conducted field trials of various herbicides and processes in coordination with the DNR. So, we gave them the information that we found and what we found was that nothing works very well over the long term. Many things will give you seasonal control, but nothing gives you very good year-over-year control. This year, our, we have two alternatives in our proposal. The first and preferred alternative is a field trial of a new product called Procellicor. It is supposed to be a silvery bullet. There is no silver bullet for Eurasian water milfoil, but they think this is the best that's come along. It has a number of advantages. First of all, it doesn't harm other native plants when used at the correct dosages. It gives you longer year-over-year control. It requires less contact time with the plant, which is good because if it's applied in the wind or with boat traffic, the normal chemicals require hours of contact time in order to be effective. This only requires two hours. So, it hasn't been approved yet, it's supposed to be available this summer, but we'll see. We had an alternative of a different program that we offered and they funded that. We think that our association is a very efficient and cost-effective organization. We've been doing this for 10 years. We have had good results. Our members, as you can see, they come back year after year and they fund us, so they are supportive of what we do. We get letters of support from the Rice Creek Watershed District, which is a great ally of ours. The city of Forest Lake gave us a great recommendation this year for our proposal. The Ashback Point Homeowners Association and the North Shore Clear Lake Association members, our residents of the lake, all support our activities. In 2018, we estimate that we'll treat 35 acres of milfoil. We can't be sure, it changes every year, but that's our estimate. We have 11 acres in the program with Washington County, for which they have given us $7,000. $900 goes to an insurance policy, which they require. That leaves us with 24 acres to be treated. The thing that we have found most effective in the past is single pass 24D at four parts per million, which is the maximum dosage on the label, and that costs $12,000, a little over $12,000. Our members have contributed this year $5,200 for that offshore contribution. We have a shortfall of $6,000, almost $7,000. City of Forest Lake has budgeted and provided us in the past with $5,000. What we're asking, the Clear Lake Association is asking, is that in the event we need to treat 35-plus acres and spend more than we have available, that has been contributed, we would ask the city to increase its contribution. And we're looking at $2,000 additional dollars from $5,000 to $7,000. And we appreciate that additional support. We're appreciative of the support we've received in the past. It's been a very good relationship and our members appreciate it. So, I will conclude on that note and if you have any questions or comments, I'd like to try and answer them.
Well, thank you very much, Doug. I've got a couple of, you know, Rice Creek Watershed works with you to come up with treatment maps.
Right.
What's your feedback? I mean, are those maps spot-on as to, you know, the best treatment route or do you think modifying that or, I mean...
Well, last year, if you do them early in, say, in the middle of May, they'll come out and they'll identify the patches. The plant continues to grow and so patches that were not visible in May 15th may be up and growing vigorously on June 1st. So, we, they do the first pass and then our members can continue to look at the progress that the plant is making in the lake. And then we talked to Blue Water Science and to Rice Creek about adjustments to the treatment map. So, what we try to do is get a treatment plan that is going to treat as much of it as is really practical. You can't treat every little small patch that comes up, but we try to treat the major patches that occur around the lake. So, yeah, they're pretty good and they're willing to adjust it, so they listen.
Well, thank you. Just another quick question. Zebra mussels, has that been an issue in Clear Lake at all?
No, not at this point. We, yeah. We have not had any. We have, that's one of the things we've done, we've put out our zebra mussel detectors, a piece of PVC pipe on a wire, hang it. Many of our members have them hanging from the docks and we hang them at the public access and check them to see if there are any mussels appearing. If there are, you know, it's probably too late anyway. Nobody's ever gotten rid of them, so once you have them, you have them.
All right. Any other questions?
I just want to comment on the effort that these folks are doing on their own. I mean, it's amazing. And it's a very expensive thing and I got to give them credit for all they've done there for Clear Lake. So, I show up Forest Lake and help these folks out. You know, the effort is already there, so just my comment on that.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think we have no expenses other than these projects. We have no administrative expenses. We may spend $400 a year on stamps, letters, and printing and everything else goes toward treatment programs, so.
Is there any inspection going on, on the public launch for zebra mussels or invasive species, weeds, that kind of stuff?
We haven't done any of that. It's expensive. Rice Creek applied for a grant last year with the DNR. It would have been used, portion of it would have been used on ours. You know, you can't be there enough hours to really make a difference, I think. Forest Lake, it inspections, cleanups, they did everything that they could and they've got milfoil and zebra mussels and curly leaf pond weed and everything that you can get, they've got and they've done great inspection programs. It's, I don't know that it's really worth the money to do it.
I agree. Yeah, again, I appreciate everything that, you know, you guys do. I mean, you bring a level of expertise that the city just doesn't have in this and, you know, for you to be able to wade through all the different levels of bureaucracy and not go insane trying to do it is...
Actually, Washington County are, they're pretty good people and they've been very supportive. They just have a cumbersome process for people who don't write grants, you know, and so...
If there's something the city can do as far as, you know, talking to the county about modifying how that gets done, we'd be more than willing to, because I'm sure Forest Lake, Lake Association as well has to deal with the same.
They were there, they had four proposals last year at this. Actually, the county has, they called this year and said, you know, we don't need to do the presentations. We know enough about aquatic invasive species now and what you guys are capable of, so you don't need to make a presentation. We'll just give you... They didn't give us what we asked for, but they gave us what they gave us last year.
I don't know why they don't just, you know, look at how many acres of water there are and divide it out so that you know ahead of time what's available. I mean...
Probably lose out in that deal, though.
Yeah, probably.
I just want to echo what's been said, that I think the Clear Lake Association's done fantastic work. I think Sam said it very well. And personally, for $2,000 to take care of our water, you know, the one that people drive by on 35 think is Forest Lake, I think is absolutely worth it, so yeah, I support.
Thank you very much.
Have a great evening.
Thank you, you too.
That's my consensus, absolutely.
Yep.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work, sir.
So, I think you three are all here for right-of-way?
Yes.
All right. Any problem, just skipping to number six and going back?
Thank you.
All right.
Do you have staff before you want to come?
I think Donovan's going to lead in and then you guys can feel free to...
I want to jump in, Doug.
Sure.
Yeah, I have a brief presentation, just to give you an overview. And this is something that we've, it's been a collaborative effort with the Public Works, with zoning, with Ryan, with Jane Contiere, who's also assisting us with the comp plan update. And this is the comprehensive right-of-way ordinance draft. And the reason why we seeked it, to, you know, explore adopting this, is for one thing, our current standards are in different chapters of the city code. Four different chapters. And then, we have a list of different issues that we've identified that, and mostly these come out of, from Dave Adams, since he is, he's the one who spends the time out there in the right-of-ways and that's kind of his jurisdiction. And things relate to maintenance of the roads themselves, some of it's just the nuisance code. And then there's also things related to trees, some of the improvements people put in the right-of-ways. There's been tension with residents when city committees trim trees within the right-of-way for safety reasons, for greater visibility and residents become irate. So we want to kind of clarify maintenance responsibilities with this. And also, a big reason is that we're going to see quite a few applications for the next generation telecom and so we need to have a kind of a regime to be able to, permitting regime in order to efficiently deal with those. That's the third reason, of course, that's the reason our guests are here this evening. Quick summary of the right-of-way ordinance. It has its own set of definitions that apply specifically to the U standards. There are general regulations that relate to the existing concerns and propose new standards. The, it envisions and basically, you know, sets forth a permitting process to do, for contractors to do work within right-of-way. And it's a specific process for permitting these small wireless facilities. This is something that was, you know, passed in the last state legislature session and basically the cities were given kind of a timeline on establishing ways in which they craft their ordinances and basically having a comprehensive right-of-way ordinance is the means to, where the city retains the most amount of control. And then finally, the ordinance allows for compliance, permit revocations or denials and for all sorts of right-of-way work. So, in that case, it's a 22-page document. I don't want to run through all of it, but, you know, at this point, I do want to open it up for any kind of questions or if, just if you want me to kind of jump in different pieces, if you've reviewed it and want to ask any questions.
Yeah, let's open it up for comments, questions, suggestions.
So, I've only had a few days to look at this. I think at first, is this on?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Jay Littlejohn. By the way, I'm an attorney with Moss and Barnett in Minneapolis. With me, you know, Karen got up and introduced herself first, but Mike Cogar is actually a resident of your city. He's the implementation manager and real estate manager, so he's the one who's most directly involved with how my client can make the service better here, because that's the whole reason for the small cells. Works in conjunction with the macro sites. I think it's important, before I start talking any specifics, to sort of explain a little bit of how the, how the system works and if you have specific questions, please just interrupt me. So the, there are already our macro sites and they're providing a signal in most places throughout the city. There are times, in particular, that the system doesn't have enough capacity to handle all the users, because everybody, you know, everybody's got a phone. Everybody wants to check the weather if they're unboating, they want to, you know, text the picture of the big fish, they want to, they want, you know, they're here for the fireworks like we always are and I live in Lionel. You know, they're taking pictures of the fireworks and sending it off to their grandparents or whatever. People are using those devices all the time and the more times people use the devices when there's a lot of people together, the system can't handle the capacity or can't handle all the work and that's why you try to open a webpage and try to send a text and it just goes and goes and goes and doesn't work. These small cells are relatively new technology, just the last couple of years, that allow very small antennas, very small equipment boxes to be mounted on light poles, power distribution poles. You know, they're small. In fact, the statute, when the legislature adopted the statute, one of the things they did is they put size limitations on this equipment and said, it can't be any bigger than this six cubic feet. Everything's got to be, all the antennas have to fit within the six cubic foot area. So they've got, you know, it doesn't apply to everything, it only applies to these small devices. The funny thing is that, you know, the comprehensive, the comprehensive right-of-way ordinance has been adopted by, you know, cities throughout the state of Minnesota. It's been within the statutory right to do so if necessary, but it applies to lots of users in the right-of-way. In particular, there's a statute, it's 237.162 and 237.163. Those two statutes combined create a special category of use for telecommunications right-of-way users, not just wireless, regular wireline telecommunications and wireless communications now. And the PUC adopted rules in like late 90s, 1999, 2000, that also have a series of, call it limitations on what cities can and cannot require. And some of the provisions in the ordinance kind of go follow those rules and I know that we're kind of getting far into the weeds. What did the Public Utilities Commission do? And rather than sit here and kind of go through it one by one, I think it's probably more productive for me to just send a red line off to the city attorney and city staff and they could take a look and double-check my research and make sure that that's right. I saw that this particular ordinance was based upon a League of Minnesota Cities draft ordinance and it appears that the issues with the ordinance almost always came when they varied from the League of Minnesota Cities draft. So I have no doubt that there are issues in the city and they, and some of those limitations could certainly apply to other users of the right-of-way, but by law, they can't apply to the telecommunications industry. So, I don't know, it'd be very helpful to, if you'd like some examples, I can give them to you. They're kind of arcane, you know, one of them is, let me see. Oh, for instance, there's a prohibition on no privately-owned structures in the right-of-way. I'm not sure that that was intended to apply to telecommunications, you know, poles and telephone poles and the like, but the, you know, the legislature has already spoken and said you have to make those rights-of-way available even for the companies to put their own poles up if they can. Just so you know, by the way, my client isn't really interested in that sort of thing. We would rather use your poles and if we have to, we would rather replace your poles, give you a brand-new pole and have it accommodate the structure. But the legislature says you can't stop the telecommunications companies any more than you can stop the power companies from putting up poles when the conditions justify it, when the conditions support it. So, you know, there's a few things that need to be tweaked with it. By and large, it follows the league's model and the league attorney spent lots of time crafting that model. So, I don't know if you want me to go through any other examples or if that kind of covers it for you.
No, you know, I think getting the red line would be the best go with.
Okay.
Couple of questions. When you started talking about poles, is there regulations as to, you know, proximity to other poles?
The, so the city has, obviously, you know, the right to regulate the rights-of-way and there can be reasonable spacing, there can be reasonable requirements on the use of decorative poles. For instance, if the whole line is pole is decorative, you can't just, you know, you can certainly have a regulation that nobody can stick a wood pole in a line of decorative light poles, for instance. So there are, there are limits as to what you can do, but it's not, it's not sort of a carte blanche here, you have to do whatever they say no matter what.
Sure.
So, yeah, you could, you could have some regular spacing requirements.
No, there's certain areas of our city where we've tried to underground everything.
Antennas won't work if it's underground, so...
Antennas won't work underground, but, I mean, in those areas where, you know, it's, cosmetically, it's much more sensitive, say, you know, commercial walking area, retail walking areas where, you know, yeah, we do have very fancy light poles, things like that. Would you put, if you needed to put equipment there, would it go on top of one of our finished poles or would, I mean, you know...
You know, so much depends on what the pole design is. I can tell you what we've done in other places. So yes, the, if it's a, if it's a design, if the pole is, you know, you can certainly impose reasonable regulations on decorative poles and that would include exactly what you're talking about. The question of whether you can put a pole where everything else is required to be underground, it's pretty clear that because the antennas can't go underground...
Yep.
You know, you're going to, if the, if the communications user requires it and it's not a residential zone and it's not a historical district, you know, zone just for single-family residences, you can require a conditional use permit too. But if it's, if it's just the fact that a, a single-family home could also go there, but it's a commercial district, like might be the case in a neighborhood commercial district or we run into some cities where the zoning is progressive, so R1 is just single-family homes, but industrial is everything from R1 through commercial up through industrial, it's pretty clear the legislature didn't intend that you would prohibit or require conditional use permits throughout the city. conditional use permits throughout the city, just where it's single-family, just where it's zoned just for single-family residents. But, yeah, that question about decorative poles, and I, you won't get any pushback from the, from the company on that either, you know, to, you know, make it look right too for your area. Because we're trying to provide a service to your residences and your businesses and...
Well, a couple more things here. Forest Lake is really desperate for better high-speed internet. So anything that can, you know, anything that can help that. I mean, we're, we're kind of caught in between, you know, the rural broadband and the high-density of the metro area.
Yep.
And we do have a lot of rural residents that really can benefit from increased access to internet, you know, both for being able to work at home, for kids. So, you know, this is definitely something that, that is going to have a lot of appeal around here. And so, you know, I mean, we want to work with everybody to help us out. Where I'm going with this, is this not like a gold rush where, you know, first company puts a claim on this, and that's the only, I mean, do these, are, you know, if Verizon and, you know, company X, Y, or Z, are they all going to be able to put equipment on one pole? Or is it shared equipment between companies? Or, I mean, how does that part of it work?
Okay, so I should back up and say, the reason why I pointed to Mike when you said the high-speed internet, that is one thing that he and I have talked about time and again, and that is that the benefit to this technology now, and the next step, which is 5G technology, will allow, you know, super-fast downloading. Somebody, I don't download movies to my phone without sticking it in my computer, but apparently you can download a two-hour movie in 30 seconds? Two minutes? It's very fast, under, under 5G. So, I mean, this is the way to get 5G to people without having to bury, you know, fiber and cable lines to everywhere in the world. The, the way, the reason that it works is because these companies, you know, they don't, they don't get any subsidies from anybody, but they spend the money to take fiber out to each one of these small cells. And then the last connection is wireless, but from then on, it's fiber optic to the rest of the world. And that's what allows the speed to go so fast. They do not use the same equipment. The companies, you know, they each have their own radios, but they're small. You know, that, we have them in Minneapolis, right outside my office door, or office window, rather. And they are, it's like, remember those, those old tower computers a lot of people have? I still have at home. You know, two of those on a pole and a couple of antennas. That's, that's the, that's all the equipment there is.
I have an image of one up, if you want to come in. Just, I have a...
Beam me to it.
I'll beat you to it. There you go. Right there, over here, that's what the tower is.
That's the whole cell site, that's the whole small cell. There's nothing, that, that equipment is then connected back to a hub that has the rest of the equipment for it, and that's all connected through fiber optics. Different cities have decided to go different ways. It's certainly possible for the companies to put all of their equipment on the same pole, but most cities have decided to put, you know, they don't need to be right on top of each other, you know, they can be several hundred feet away, one, you know, one provider than the next. And so, if there's an available pole, they just go across the street or down the block to provide the service. So the, the gold rush thing is not really an issue. We are aware that there have been some companies that have decided that it might be in their best interest to try to, do sort of a land rush and go out and try to lock up city poles, and then turn around and lease those permits back to the providers. I would caution you that if you don't recognize them as being somebody that sells wireless service, that's probably a tower developer that's, may not have the city's best interest in mind. But that's, the, other than those, those people throughout the country that think they've found the next best thing and next way to make a quick buck, you know, that's not been the case with the companies. They're, in the macro world, the site, the, the large cell site world, they're all, you know, we, we coexist on water towers together, you know, AT&amp;T and T-Mobile and Verizon Wireless and Sprint. We coexist on each other's cell sites, so we, you know, we're both a landlord and a tenant of each other. You know, the people that work for Verizon Wireless at one point may have worked at T-Mobile. So it's a, it's a very cooperative, you know, to the extent they're able to, cooperative community. They don't really have to worry about a land grant, because everybody knows that everybody's got to work together. The FCC has required that these companies compete and provide increasingly better service at decreasingly lower cost. And that's kind of, sort of where we find ourselves today.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
What's the range of one of these small cells? I don't remember seeing it in the literature.
You know, they, they, the range, it's, it's more of a function of where the closest users are. I would say the maximum distance is somewhere in that four to maybe 900 feet. Is that sound about right, Mike? So it's not, you know, a little over a block, not very far, but it's not terribly, it's not like within, you know, you got to be within 20 feet of one.
Great, thank you.
And these provide more than, so, I mean, they, you know, cellphone, but cable, other...
Yep, anything you can do, anything you can do, like, for instance, my, my account, I have a hotspot for my son who's going to college. His phone is his, is his internet connection. He doesn't have a cable, he doesn't have a cable bill. He doesn't have cable in his apartment, he just uses his phone, and that's how he connect, that's how he uses the internet. And he watches Netflix, using his mobile hotspot. And it's, because of the, you know, the flat rate, it's turned out to be a lot less expensive than, than signing up for cable internet.
All right. Well, thank you very much. So we'll be looking forward to getting you ready.
Just a quick point of clarity on the internet. Trying to address some of that rural internet connectivity issues that we're currently facing. I did, when Verizon first came in, bring this question up. I said, is this a possible solution to kind of figure out some of that? Those underserved areas in a rural community that don't have good access to high-speed internet right now. And it potentially could be a fit, however, they would still need to wire the infrastructure in to get these towers back to the main tower. However, it could solve that kind of, instead of having to wire each house individually, you could put potentially a small cell in there, get a higher-speed data point in there and cover that 900 feet, so you could just do one tower for like a subdivision versus having to wire in each home. So, it's potential. I don't think it's the silver bullet to address a lot of our real issues, because still we're going to have a customer per mile issue that's out there. However, it could be a nice tool in the toolkit to potentially get some of these areas served with higher-speed internet than we currently have. So, just kind of wanted to clarify that.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, man. Ed?
Yeah, just a question, are there any, you know, if we service, say, if somebody's servicing that light on top of that post damages your equipment? What's the liability issues, I guess?
The, the statute allows you to require that we, well, that we indemnify you for some kinds of things. But the question of, so if you hurt our stuff, I think, I guess I'd be responsible, but only if you're negligent or, or there's an intentional act, you know, if it's an accident, then, you know, the laws of negligence would apply, and the city is immune as well. You know, the city has a...
So if our snowplow clips a pole and knocks it over?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the cost of us being in the right-of-way. We have to go out and, you know, put new stuff up. Have we run into pole issues yet, Mike, that you know of? No? I mean, people talk about it, and I, I don't know of any, none have come to my office, but, you know, the technology's new. The city would probably be replacing its pole. These are not crucial bits of infrastructure. Like I said, you pretty much have a signal wherever you are. So the nice thing is, if, if one of these small cells goes down, the capacity will be hurt in that particular area, but likely there will still be a signal, so people can still call 911 and, and still be able to use their phones. It's just they're going to work slowly until the new, the new pole gets put up.
So in the, in these new regulations, new statutes, and I can see the potential for it, possibly extreme case, but, you know, that property owner has that pole in front of his yard, and who knows why, he doesn't want that little cell antenna up there. Is there, I mean, is there any recourse, any remediation for that property owner to come to the city here and say, I want it moved down the block or something? It's blocking my view of the lake, and I really don't want it here.
So this is a circumstance where there's a new pole going up?
Well, whether it's new or existing, but, you know, I'm just looking at, you know, yes, it is the city's right-of-way, we have control, but, you know, there's a property owner there. And, you know, I'm just picking out a scenario here that, you know, this particular property owner, that pole, let's say the pole's already there, but he doesn't want that cell tower on it. Maybe he's afraid of radiation, you know, I don't know what. But, I mean, is, is, is there a way that, you know, he can come to us and, and we can have the ultimate authority, whether, you know, you can put that on that pole, or it has to be moved into somebody else's?
The, the nice thing about the, about, about our approach is that there is always an opportunity for the city to decide to relocate the pole, because we invariably are going to ask for permission to replace your pole in the first place. So, you know, the, if there, if that pole has already been kind of a sore spot for this particular landowner, and it's already a pole, you know, that, as long as somebody tells us, we can, as part of the relocation process, we'll just, you know, move the pole down the street. Unless you already need a light there. I mean, usually those poles that people don't like to look at, it's because there's a light fixture on it, and the light shining in their, in their, you know, front yard, interrupting their nice view of the, of the lake or the woods or the stars or whatever. And if that has been a problem, and your public works department decides that, you know, it's okay to move that pole, I mean, they're going to know already that someone has complained about the condition of the pole, location of the pole, the type of light fixture on the pole. And so, you know, that all can happen for free, because my clients already offered to, in the application, to replace the pole. And just say, yeah, you can replace it, but you got to relocate it 100 feet down, or, you know, whatever distance away. The, the question of radiation is a difficult one, because the, quite frankly, the Congress has said, you know, people talked about radiation for years, and there's no credible evidence to support any link between any diseases and the use of cell phones or being, or living in close proximity. Latest studies by the American Cancer Society, you can just Google "American Cancer Society" and cell phones, and you'll get the study, and there's no credible link. That being said, though, bear in mind that these small cells are really low-power. Do you know how many watts they are, Mike, off the top of your head? Is it still in that five to 15?
Some of the, some of the installations can go upwards of 20 watts.
Okay, 20 watts. So you're talking about, you know, and it's 20 watts, and it's 35 feet up in the air, however tall the pole is. Less RF transmission gets to you than gets from a baby monitor in your house. And again, the, the EPA and the, and the FCC have put out studies on the different power densities that we all face, you know. And for me, the baby monitor sticks in my mind, because for years, both my boys, you know, they were in their room, and there was a baby monitor right next to the crib. And that puts out more power than these small cells do. So, you know, I don't think that we ought to spend a whole lot of time worrying about that. But the question of, do, I don't like that pole there in the first place, you know, gives the city every opportunity to, to put in the permit, you got to move it.
Yeah, if I could add a little, a piece there. In residential, in areas where there's single-family dwellings permitted, it is a conditional use permit to put one of these wireless facilities. So it'll go through the CUP process, which of course involves that public notification. And another piece of this whole right-of-way ordinance, and this, this is not everything that is a part of this, is here before you tonight, is those CUP standards. And that, that would go in the zoning code. This is simply the city code. Of course, this goes directly to council for adoption. Though we probably take the planning commission just, you know, as a matter of course. But, you know, we do have some draft CUP requirements, and so we'll, we'll follow up with that as well.
So is each small cell its own CUP?
You can put up, I believe, 15, like, applications, and we'll consider them as But, you know, I think each, I think each, you know, each one would need to comply with the conditions. And the way it's written right now, it's some, something like how utility pole, like light poles are placed on the, you know, on, at the junction of, you know, private boundary lines and, and within the right-of-way, something like that. So it's kind of minimized, it kind of replicates where you see light poles these days. But we've, haven't, we have a draft, but we haven't, I haven't really spent a lot of time thinking about it, and so we'll have to bring that to council for discussion in the future.
Yeah, I apologize. Mr. Hart's absolutely right. In areas where you're talking about homeowners, single-family homes, you're requiring a CUP under this draft, right?
Yes.
So, so, yeah, I mean, you have the regular process. So in addition to knowing that you're going to do it, knowing that that's been a sore spot, and the person wants that pole replaced, there would also be a regular, if you, if you were to adopt the ordinance as it sits, be a regular conditional use permit process, public testimony, homeowner comes in, tells you, you condition approval on moving it down the street, you know, for instance. Or maybe you say, you know, what, it's not appropriate there, it doesn't meet the conditions, and deny it. That's certainly possible, too.
So, you know, we're, we're talking about an ordinance, but I also hear, you know, you're talking about going ahead with this, right, or, you know, a project that's in the works, basically, of putting these up here. You know, so we're looking at, you know, two different little angles here, but I guess if, if, you know, if there's a way the city can work with you to, to get more of our rural area covered, we'd definitely like to explore that possibility anyway.
It seems to me that, that the first step in covering the rural area is to make sure that we have traditional cell sites there, because the small cells don't work on their own. They need, there needs to be a reliable signal from a macro site, and I'm not sure where in the city there is, but if you can get that information to Ms. O'Brien, to Karen, she can make sure that we get that to the client and, and be able to do that. Because the, the small cells, it's not, it's not a substitute, it's a supplement for the, for regular service.
Right. Well, yeah, I don't, I suppose, Dan, do you want to?
And then, just to speak to that, Mary, members of council, when they came in originally too, I did kind of ask, you know, if we go down this road and start doing these projects, so what does this do? You guys, you have like 20 projects for Forest Lake in the mix already that you're planning? And they said, no, it kind of clears a hurdle, where if they're going to do an investment in their infrastructure, having this outline process clear for them, so they know that these ones are already ready to go, they know the process, so we may tip up in their investment structure, which then we could say, I think some of the first areas were more of the downtown populated areas, is kind of what they initially looked at. But then I said, well, cover those, and start looking at, can we bring this out into the more rural areas to kind of figure out some of that last mile stuff? So that was kind of addressed. But again, they looked at for, the macro site needed to be there, which we already have coverage in downtown areas. So that's where they would start, that's what they told me. But it would kind of eliminate some barriers, it may make us look a little more appealing for a future investment if we want, if they wanted to go for those more rural areas.
Well, I guess, you know, as we're talking rural areas, I'd say there's still a fairly large density of population. I mean, we're talking a community of over 20,000 here. But as you reach around the lakes and things like that, you know, there's quite a bit of population, but yet, services like internet or broadband are very, very limited out there. And, you know, it's frustrating that we get forgotten about, but as long as, you know, we have the floor and we have you here listening, or forcing you to listen, there's opportunity, and we're more than willing to try and work with you to facilitate some progress in that area. Ed?
You said before, I believe you said this has a range of about, what, 900 feet? Is that?
At the most, yeah. Maybe a little bit, depending on if there's, so there, the, it's, it's a signal, it's not, it's not like on a wire or a rope, so it's hard to predict, you know, if you get deeper into a building, the range is lower, but, you know, outside.
But so, every 900 feet, you need another one, or?
Conceivably, be, you know, if it's 900 feet, then it can have 1,800 feet between the two of them.
But I mean...
This one reaches 900.
I guess what I'm asking is, so every nine, every pole that's 900 feet apart would have one of these on? Is that what we're saying?
They can be 1,800 feet apart.
Well...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I mean...
Yeah, that, I mean, if it's 900 feet, then you'd have this one, this one reaches out 900 feet, and then this one is 900 feet away and reaches back 900 feet, so...
But this is, this is an augmentation to their main cell...
Right.
...towers. So this is, is working as a supplement to that, not, not as a replacement for it.
Exactly.
So they have to have the main cell tower for the reception.
So if we have a main cell tower covering our downtown?
So, yeah.
How many of these, then, would you expect to see?
Conceivably, there'd be like one every two, one every two blocks, one every, you know, something like that, maybe, depending on how big the blocks are. You know, maybe there'll be an area like down by the beach and a boat, the boat landing and stuff, where maybe there'll be one, you know, maybe they'd be 300 feet apart, because there's a lot more people in that area. It really is, we're, we're not as concerned about range in this technology as we are the number of users in the area. So you get a lot of people in a small area, it doesn't... So you get a lot of people in a small area, it doesn't matter what the range is because the whole cell's gonna be occupied with the people that are close by. That, okay.
All right. So, um, you gonna provide a red line?
Yeah.
The city will look at that and we'll-
Great.
-get back, but, yeah, wherever we can try to work together and, I say, if, you know, if, if there's time to, you know, look at our, our population, but the density of it, you know, especially as it goes around the lake, I mean, it's, it's as close together as, you know, any, any city would be. And, um, we're talking several thousand people, so many thousand people living around the lakes that, uh, you know, this could really benefit and-
Right, yeah.
-like to work with you on that.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question, just for my own.
Yes.
How does satellite technology play into this at all, or doesn't it?
Uh, we don't provide satellite service, there are some satellite services that are out there. I believe those services also require a phone connection of some kind to provide that, the two-way, you know, you can take the download from the satellite, but the last time I looked at, looked into it for my parents who've got a place in Lake of the Woods, uh, you had to have a phone connection too to be able to, you know, you make the request and it's a very little bit of data and then it sends the movie or whatever. Uh, it doesn't really have anything to do with small cells.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand how that-
Yeah, and it only works in very, that really only works in very remote areas, and I think you need to be willing to put up with a pretty slow speed, much slower than-
It had nothing to do with this conversation, I just-
Than anything like this.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Go right ahead.
Um, I just want, I just wanted to get clarification on the coverage around the lakes area. Um, is this specific to Verizon or?
No, um, it's, you know, we got, we, you know, obviously have cellphone coverage in ninety-five percent of our city, the, the entire thirty-six square miles of Forest Lake. But we have very limited, um, internet broadband, um, very limited speeds, um, most of it's old, you know, copper wire type connections. And, um, as, I used to be on the cable commission, but our, our cable provider is not very motivated to expand their system at the moment. Um, but I always hear from people that, you know, this is one of the biggest issues with living outside the two square miles that was the former city limits here is, you know, the internet connections, you know, and, you know, it's not just, you know, kids doing their homework anymore, but it's, you know, for people to be able to, um, work at home instead of driving to Minneapolis or St. Paul every day, um, you know, it's a basic quality of life, like, you know, lights or telephone was a hundred years ago, anyway.
So, and, forgive me, but, um, again, to clarify, is this using the internet through your phone, your smartphone, is that what you're referring to, using the data from your phones or?
Well, or just internet at home.
Okay.
You know, for your computer, I mean, computers are almost becoming, you know, computers are very, almost obsolete for a lot of people that are using their smartphone for everything, but yet, um, even in, when you get to parts of Forest Lake, um, you have very limited, um, cellphone connections. You know, the, you know, the one bar, two bar type thing on it, it's not a, a rock-solid connection on, on that, anyway.
And it's Verizon, or is it?
It's everybody's.
Everybody's.
It's everybody's.
Okay.
We-
I think it's a real opportunity for, for all of the cellphone companies because of the limited, um, uh, wire, or excuse me, the limited cable access and, and things like that. Um, I, I rarely use my computer ever anymore. I, I read every one of the packets on my cellphone, um, and things, so, you know, um, if the, if people had the ability to, to do more with their cellphone in, in those areas where there's limited connection, I think they would absolutely utilize it, and I think it could be a differentiator in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you have, um, you know, marketing person as somebody that we, uh, could talk to or, or whoever, you know, refer them to me and go through it or, you know, just take a drive around, like I said, drive around the lake and, you know, watch your, your phone. I mean, it's, it's not a good quality connection and, and not just Verizon, everybody's, but, uh, you know, for, for our residents to get that level of service would be great and we'd be willing to do what we can to facilitate that. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you, have a good evening. So the zoning text amendment to prohibit large used car dealerships in Forest Lake.
Okay.
Donovan, can you take us in that?
Yes, sir. Um, mayor members of council, um, this is an issue that, um, may not be on your radar, but it's actually been something on my radar since last July. Um, there is, and this, we've had a, we had an application to, um, to put a, a large dealership that was more than just the, you know, the kind of place you'd go out on a Saturday afternoon to go kick your tires. It's, um, evidently, um, it'd be a, a large auction area for, um, for cars that were damaged and basically rendered inoperable and kind of replaceable by insurance companies. Um, in this case, what the application would have been about a thirty-three acre, um, car lot with weekly internet auctions, um, on Highway ninety-seven, in our industrial zoned area by the airport. And, um, one of the things, one of the final statements from our former city administrator here, I can blame it on Aaron, he, he said, maybe this is something that we, um, you know, don't wanna, uh, you know, allow in the city. Um, and, because this would pretty much, uh, you know, lock it, um, in my opinion, lock up that land use for maybe decades in an area for, you know, that according to the zoning code is, or, you know, could be, um, any other places, you know, it could be agricultural zoned area. Um, but, uh, you know, for, for instance, in the industrial zone district, it's, you know, we see that as a place for more, you know, uh, kind of job creator, you know, higher, higher level improvements than a, uh, a, something that has a, you know, small, um, office area and just acres of outdoor storage of vehicles. So what you have before you is our current standards for uses. So this is, um, in every zoning district, you know, there's the, the permitted and conditional interim uses, and, and where there's a motor vehicle dealership listed, um, as a permitted or conditional, for instance, it's, it's a permitted use within the highway business district, um, then the, uh, the dealership needs to comply with certain standards. You know, these relate to, you know, minimum size or lot width, um, you know, some site improvements regarding, you know, paving and landscaping, and then, uh, some clause related to electronic speaker devices, um, and, you know, not, not being nuisance, basically. Um, and so, what, you know, if, if council sees this as a, as an issue and wanted, wants to actually prohibit this kind of large-scale used car dealership, um, I interviewed a couple of the, um, like, interviews are a big word, I mean, I called up a couple of the, the owners of the larger used car dealerships and new car dealerships over on Nineteenth Street, and asked them, you know, what, you know, would they be okay with, you know, prohibiting this large type of used car dealership? Um, and, you know, what would, what would be some language that could work? And the easiest way I think could do would be just simply, would be a maximum size. Um, and the language, uh, and one of the, um, dealers recommended was, you know, maximum size of a new dealership to, um, limited to ten acres with no more than five acres devoted to used car sales. Um, and so it, it would be in addition to these, um, you know, basically an amendment of that first line that, that establishes the minimum acreage, um, but also would establish a maximum acreage. And so, but I want first to put it before council to see, you know, if you have any appetite for this and, um, if, get your feedback on if we want to take it to a planning
Well, um, it, it's, it's a tough one. Um, I don't like to regulate, I don't think, I don't like the fact that, you know, we're trying to regulate a business and the growth of a business. I do understand the need for, for this in developing our community and trying to develop a tax base. Um, one problematic area with, specifically with salvage-type vehicles is, um, pollution. You know, they're gonna be dripping oil, they're gonna be leaking antifreeze, there's gonna be a lot of other things. And I think we need, uh, one of the things to do is to address how that, how that is, is handled. Because, you know, fluids, no matter what, are gonna be, if it's outside, they're gonna be leaking, and they're gonna be ending up in either the ground or the lakes or water system. And a concentration of that, long-term, um, could end up costing the city a lot of money to clean up. So that's, that's one issue that I see, um, you know, limiting it to ten acres, and what if they start a separate company and put another ten acres next door and start another company and put another ten acres next door? Um, you know, I don't know if just limiting it to the size is, is a way to, it, it's, it's something we need to look at and think about, but I don't know, you know, you can, you can just keep putting up more and more dealerships. The potential of, you know, having to have new car sales, uh, to sell used cars, or having to have, you know, I, it's more the salvage car sales that really we need to try and look at, and maybe part of that zoning or that regulation needs to be, um, you know, is it a drivable vehicle or is it considered something else? And maybe that's another way that we can regulate this, so.
Yeah, I went through, um, you know, kind of the mental exercise of how to define it. Um, you know, most used, you know, most dealerships bring their cars, they truck their, their vehicles in, you know, and so they're not, you know, on the road driving. Um, so it's difficult to say whether they'd be operable or not. And, you know, this, right now with the, um, you know, the, the zoning code does prohibit junkyards, you know, where you're actually, you know, rendering a vehicle or, you know, taking it apart, so this doesn't really apply to that because they're simply bringing, they're trucking to the site. Um, and the individual who was proposing this idea said that, you know, his, his defense to what you were saying about the fluid vehi, you know, leakage is that they've usually been in a, um, you know, in a garage or something like that for a period of time and leaked out what they needed to before they actually even make it to this, you know, larger lot. You know, I don't know if the truth of that or not, but, um-
It probably is.
Maybe there's a way to define salvage as kind of like how we define, you know, non, you know, non-conforming structures, something, if it's destroyed more than fifty percent of its value or something, you know, maybe there's a-
Drivable or isn't it drivable? I know that's probably the, one of the bigger defining points.
Yeah.
If it was drivable, they wouldn't be bringing it to salvage, anyway.
Well, this, um, I mean, the same in, individual, um, does rent to the same company in Ham Lake, and I go down their website, you can look at their auction list, and some of the vehicles are, only have suffered from minor damage, but maybe that's, maybe that's quite the exception, so maybe that works.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, I mean, and that's, if there's minor damage and there's no fluids leaking, it really poses no, you know, concern, but I would say that's more of the exception than the rule. I mean, I, I know where this, this, this particular location is, and I know the people involved, and I want to try and help them as much as possible, but, um, you know, for our community benefit, I don't know if this really is ultimate goal to have that, and, and it's, once, once it's established, it's gonna be more of a long-term. It's not, we're here for a year or two and we're gonna move on. I mean, they have an investment in, in the property and the, in the structures that they put up. Um, if it wasn't right along a main highway, if it wasn't right along, you know, a, a potential for development, uh, I think it makes a difference too, but.
For me, I, I think, um, you know, there, I don't know how you would, you would craft this, but there, you know, if they're gonna have a lot of damaged cars, I don't think that's the image that we want right on one of our main drags, if you will. And so I think, uh, screening and things like that have to be possible for that. Now, the difference between a dealer, uh, you know, a business like that versus, you know, the new car dealerships and things, um, they want you to see the new cars. Um, in this situation, it's an, it's an auction company, they don't necessarily care because people are looking at them online, but ultimately, I don't know how we, um, you know, you know, they need to build it in a way, if they're gonna do this, they need to build it in a way that, that the junk cars that are really, really damaged are not gonna be sitting up front, and, you know, I don't know how we put that into this, and I'm not sure that thirty-three acres is the right amount, um, you know, as far as just letting that happen, but, uh, I think Ben, uh, is correct that they would, they could find, found another business and put it right next to it, another twenty acres, and just keep doing that if that's what they had to do. So, not sure that we can regulate it out, um, but not having a maximum size, I don't think is good either.
Kind of sounds to me that these cars don't sit in one spot very long. I'm, I'm not saying that they should be sold front in a junk car, and that's, no question about that, but it sounds like they don't, you know, you think of it as typical junk area where these cars go in and they sit for years sometimes. It doesn't sound like that's exactly what they're trying to do here, but, uh, I think there's some image issues that we need to deal with.
Well, and is there a way that-
Whatever.
Is there a potential that we could say that, um, you know, no damaged or salvaged or non-drivable, some, some type of definition, no vehicle like that, uh, can be stored within, say, you know, a thousand feet of, of a highway or a county road, you know, or, or something so that, you know, if, if somebody wants to put this on a city road that isn't a highly-traveled main access corridor, we can do that. But yet, you know, uh, like you said, Sam, the image and, you know, what we've seen coming into town is, is what I'm struggling with here.
Yeah, who makes, who makes that determination? You know, who's the, who's the guru that says, cross the line there, that's the problem with it?
I think it wasn't too long ago Columbus dealt with this. They, somebody wanted to come in and, who's insurance claim cars, you know, cars are totaled or-
Yep, yep.
Whatever, but they're not gonna sit there long, they're just in the process of being disposed of, so somebody could come in and bid and, well, that's a repairable, I'll give you so much for that kind of thing, and-
Right.
They denied it, I don't know on what grounds, but I think it had to do with what you just said, they didn't want oil or any of that contamination leaking into the ground.
I'm sure we could check with them and see-
But you alluded to something else, I know in Brooklyn Park, you can't store any, for a business, you can't store a dumpster or anything that's visible from a public thoroughfare. So, you can't, I mean, you just, they make you build a wall, they'll do something. So I don't see why you couldn't do that with this. None of the vehicles could be visible, visible from whatever.
I think that, I don't-
That would be screening, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you, some type of screening, but ultimately, this is going into a motor vehicle dealership, you know, so if you're putting in a new car dealership, I don't think you would, we would be saying, hey, you have to screen off all your new cars. So I, I, I think that's the difficulty where, you know, um, do you add a used car dealership portion and you add a salvage car dealership portion? Maybe that's the way around it, but, um, you are not gonna wanna screen the new or even the decent used cars, so.
Yeah, I mean, that is the one big loophole around exterior storage is that, you know, goods for sale have no requirement in the zoning code currently for these kind of screening, you know, because, for obvious reasons.
Exposure.
But perhaps there could be that, that separation for a different type of, you know, of the salvage vehicle.
Maybe one of the things we could add would be that you're not taking a car apart there or something. You bring it in, it's sold and gone, you know?
Well, and that would be the rendering, yeah, and zoning code already prohibits that, so.
Yeah, but we'd have to have some guarantees that that's exactly the case.
Certainly, well- Certainly, well, it'd probably be, I mean, these, yeah. Or maybe it's there, it's it's a CUP and so you have these certain conditions for salvage car lots and, you know.
Well, and whether it's, you know, whether it's a salvage car yard or a junkyard or, you know, gravel crushing operation or composting, you know, there's a lot of, you know, less than desirable businesses. And they're necessary, you know, people are going to continue to have accidents and smash cars up. And, you know, there's always going to be a salvage type business, I mean.
Or an impound lot.
Or an impound lot or whatever. I mean, those are all things that are necessary and are part of communities. It's just, you know, there are certain things that don't belong on a main highway where we have potential for a lot of other uses for that. And we don't have a location, we can say this is the location. You know, it's no different than the adult orientated business downtown. You know, that really, if we had a regulation to keep that out, it'd be nice too. But how do we deal with this at this location? And and that's where we're at right now. But, yeah, we we need these types of businesses, we need lumber yards and we need all these types of things. And a lot of them have items outside. And, you know, most most business owners, and I'm sure this is the same, run their business very well and do a great job. It's not just, you know, somebody doing it in their backyard dumping the oil on the ground. I'm sure that's not even, you know, I'm I'm sure they run a great business. And I'm sure they're very proud of it and they're going to draw a lot of people to to look at this. And just how do we find the location? How, you know, and that's, to me, the big problem. How do we get the location? How do we work with them to get a location and?
Agreed, I mean, this, right now, I mean, motor vehicle dealerships of any size beyond, you know, are pretty much, you know, relegated to this commercial, I mean, highway commercial zoning district. When you're largely the, you know, some Broadway, you know, and then in west of, you know, around I-35. And then, so maybe, but so, but the economics there don't really prohibit. I mean, they do prohibit this type of use because it's not really intensive. I mean, these aren't high value cars, you know. So, you know, perhaps, you know, the approach is a different carve out a different, you know, actual use, conditional use with conditions. And then insert it into a zoning district where we think it's appropriate. You know, which, you know, can be difficult. And I think the the current site that we're dealing with, it's, economics don't really support that either. Because it's basically, they need to do a, you know, decel and deceleration acceleration lane on the state highway to to the tune of something like $400,000, which that's that that kills it, you know, them as a user of the site, I believe. You know, right now, that application was incomplete and, you know, the, you know, I invited, I I informed him this was going to go, this conversation was going on tonight and he declined to be here. He seemed resigned that we would do something, but, you know, I think that, you know, I'd get some some more guidance from council on, you know, is that, is there some zoning district where we do think this would be okay?
One of the jobs that would make it a lot easier if they were here so you could find out exactly what they have in mind, you know.
Yes.
Sounds to me like it's not going to be a dealership where they're going to have cars lined up to try to sell. Sounds to me like it's an internet auction kind of thing. If that was the case, then the screening would be appropriate.
Yeah, and I and I think your point earlier, Sam, that, you know, these cars may move very, very quickly, you know, and may not sit around. You know, it could, I think you're exactly right. If people were sitting here being able to answer the question, it would be a lot easier to.
Easier for me, I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about it.
So I've driven by the Copart and I've never been in it, but, you know, I've driven by the one in Ham Lake. I was, you know, it's it's surrounded by heavy pine trees, if I remember right.
I have an aerial up of the actual site, if you want to come in.
I think the other factor that, you know, we'd have to find out, but I I I I always made the assumption anyway that, like, Copart is just dealers and and, you know, say, auto body shops. It's not retail, it's not people tire kicking wanting to, you know, it's it's the auto body, the professional people are buying these, fixing them up and reselling them at the at their small dealerships and things like that. Because there's very few individuals that could, you know, buy a salvage car and fix it. You need hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of machinery and tools and and whatnot to be able to, you know, fix a lot of these cars. So it's it's a business to business type of commerce, it's not retail.
That's what I'm hearing, I mean, that's.
Yeah, that's that's my understanding, it's you have registered buyers. And so the actual, you know, you know, buyer buyer, you know, traffic is not nearly as high as it would have for like a used, a general used car dealership of this size.
And at the end of the day, I would assume that half of them or more are too damaged to resell. I mean, they're they're being sold for $25 or $50 bucks to a scrapper that's just picking them up and crushing them and and selling them for scrap. But, yeah, I I don't see a retail trade involved in this. So maybe that might be another part of that angle with with the thing is, is this a retail or is this, you know, an industrial use?
And just to clarify there, I mean, there is a little bit, maybe my personal experience, I had friends in college that actually did this type of, as a hobby. He actually would research out, find salvage cars and then fix them up himself and basically courage himself all night, so a side business where he would go in as an individual buyer and always kind of found late model damaged cars and knew what to look for in the car, but would go to these places. So there is, there are groups of individuals who do this as just a side business. So there is, it's not just bigger companies that do it, he would do it as an individual and.
But I believe you have to have a auto dealer's license to even get access to.
He may have had like a smaller version of it, but he would just do it because he would, he, I mean, he had a new car every six weeks and always had the newest fanciest cars. Because he knew what to look for, what would sell, what didn't sell in the salvage title. So, I mean, he kind of found a niche market there, but he was an individual, a small guy and.
Yeah, I guess the whole point is I don't see the general public in this facility the way it's described.
Right.
But I'd sure like to hear from them.
Well, we can definitely invite them back for, you know, another.
Yeah, don't you think that'd be a good idea? I mean, I'd like to.
Yeah.
Know exactly what the nature is there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to try and regulate it out at this point. I think once this particular buyer seller, whoever we're looking at, decides yes or no, yeah, then I I think we could come up with a much more stringent guideline. But I I really don't want to, I don't want to see this happen, but yet I don't want us to just regulate it out of existence. I think we.
But that's technically a salvage yard, right?
Yeah, I would.
And you don't love those now.
Well, you know, because they're not taking the cars apart onsite.
Yeah, they're junk, I mean, they're.
I'm sorry?
They're junk, I mean.
But the state titles them salvage.
Yeah, well, our zoning code doesn't really define a salvage vehicle right now. So, I mean, maybe, you know, it could be some tinkering of the the definitions, but, I mean, I.
I mean, if you, if you, I don't know how else you would describe that other than a salvage yard.
I think they're late model repairables, if I remember. There's a difference, and it's a subtle difference, but like a salvage, I think you go in and you buy one part off the car. Late model repairable, you have to buy the entire car. And there are certain dealers when I was looking into it years ago was you would buy the whole car. You just couldn't go in there and say, I need the back clip for my, that fits my car. You go to the salvage yard, you had to buy the full vehicle and you took the whole thing with you.
That's why we really don't have enough information of what this person is thinking about, I, that's my opinion.
Yeah, and if, but we have to keep in mind, this is kind of like the discussion last night. This is about the the text amendment versus what they're trying to do. But I think to Sam's point that it would help if we understood a little bit more about what what that type of business is so that we could help craft a code that actually works for the city or for us, like potentially for the business as well.
But, I mean, it isn't like the one in Osseo where they drive cars in and strictly an auction, that's it.
Correct.
I mean, they're drivable cars in most cases.
Right.
Some aren't.
Right.
But they're not staying there, they're bid to dealers just like that.
But it's still the same, I mean, it to me, well, I mean, no, these.
They sit until they sell.
No, no, I know, that that part of it, but I guess where I'm going is, you know, once they sell one, they're going to put another one right back where it's at. It's not, you know, they're sold, they're gone and then, you know, there might be, you know.
That's true.
There's always going to be a, pretty much, there's always going to be a vehicle in that spot. When that's old, they're they're dumping another one in there right then and there, so.
And I think a point of clarification on it would be, you know, salvage as, you know, I would call the old junkyard where you go in there and you're, they sit there, that one car will sit there until all the parts are gone, until there's not enough value, then they then they crush it. I think this is like exactly like you said, where it's a constant flow of different vehicles going in and out. You know, and to me, I think definitely changes usage, you know, versus, they're sitting there until they're rusted out, not rusted out, but just one piece left versus constantly inventory changing over.
I mean, I think, I guess I would be against anything that's taking a vehicle in and parting it out any way, shape or form.
I agree with that.
Me too, and I think that's already prohibited.
Okay. All right. And that leaves us with a comp plan update.
So right now, I guess I didn't label that one really well because this is a workshop, so we need to do some work here. What we're reaching to, and this is really, you know, this is preparing us for a more, you know, extensive conference of plan workshop and they like to come have in April. And the EDA looked at this one, this is the draft land use plan. This right now is is what, pretty much they're, you know, colors on a map. But what what they represent also is potential extensions of city infrastructure. And so what we're looking for, and this would enable Ryan to begin, you know, the more extensive utility staging process, is to identify where, you know, where we want to have these future land uses. What do you want to call some of them? We had some of this conversation at the EDA and then basically related densities. And let me start with that, the southwest corner there, the mixed use industrial, you know, there with 180th there on the on the southern border of that area. That was, you know, currently, when we were talking about the EDA, it was, you know, future land use is industrial, which is something that Met Council has.
Donovan, can you zero in on your left southwest area so they can read?
Oh.
We can't read it, it's so small.
I'm sorry.
So when they do all these comparables, we get 36 square miles.
You know, of course, this is, you know, this being useful as a as a land use really is contingent, dependent on the 180th interstate interchange. But right now, you know, as as a future land use, this is what we'd like to kind of, you know, plant a stake and say, this is where we want to put the, you know, future, you know, air for economic growth, jobs in businesses on a larger scale. Because we're somewhat maxed out at that, you know, Broadway and 11th Street intersection.
This would allow restaurants, gas stations, all of those types of things as well, correct?
It could be. I think that if we wanted to go there, we might want to say more mixed use.
And that's, that's my concern. Because if we're trying to get, you know, you know, connection to 35W in, you know, in that area, you're going to, you're going to need all of the resources there, not just, you know, businesses that don't provide those, you know, the services that people need to quickly, you know, go from here to to someplace else. Yes, we want the jobs here too, but we also need to be able to have that flexibility to have a couple of gas stations or a store. You know, it'd be nice to have a grocery store at that end of town and and things like that too.
So, yeah, I, we had some feedback at the EDA and part of mine, I guess, too, was just using the name industrial gives it some significant negative connotations. But from that 180th and along Highway 61, there's a lot of, a lot of logic with, you know, just reaching back 1,000 feet or 1,500 feet or whatever to make that all, you know, highway, commercial or retail. And then, you know, as that flows back, you know, business professional and, you know, behind that, you know, let's look at corporate campus sites, things like that.
Yep.
And, you know, just clarifying a lot of what's going up and down Highway 61 as, you know, what, you know, you know, instead of having the different patchwork quilt type thing, but why aren't we just going back 1,000 feet or 1,500 feet from both sides of it? And, you know.
Making a corridor.
Yeah, making a corridor out of the whole thing.
So, yeah, moving, looking, that's kind of one of the discussion points is, you know, does, you know, council, do we have agreement there that that, you know, should pretty much follow that? And again, also then up to number two, the same, you know, that kind of tweed colored area is is the mixed use. Which, you know, we haven't defined that and that would be the next step would be to, you know, you kind, in a broad, in a broad term, define what that we mean by land use. But is that a general agreement? That's we want to do the 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 mixed use along here on the on the west side of 61 as shown with one boxes one and two?
If if somebody wants to put a business along Highway 61, entrance exits are fine, right? They don't have to put a frontage road or how would that work?
That's, I mean, that's the, you know, always with MINDOT, working with access is, can be problematic. And that's where, you know, I like to see more of kind of a node approach. So then you can basically, you know, limit access to one area and and perhaps it makes it, you know, more of a cohesive application to MINDOT. But or else, you know, we would look at, you know, perhaps so that's, we write that in, the frontage road is required. Because I don't think, you know, this, there's only so many properties there. I mean, you can see a little bit more here, these are, some of these are existing, so single family, some of these are 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 just kind of vacant or, you know, maybe some agricultural use. So, you know, I can't imagine MINDOT, you know, allowing, you know, all these. And there is a little bit of a stub road here, you know, there is a little bit of a frontage road currently. And of course, there's the Harvard Creek Trail as well that's running through here. That, you know, we have to work with access, you know, with that as well.
There's a certain distance there, you have the railroad, the old railroad bed and then that, what is it, Forest Boulevard or whatever, the dirt road there. So the service road is kind of already there.
Yeah, I guess on the one side, the service road is already there.
West side at least.
Horse Road goes all the way from Headwaters Parkway all the way down to.
Hugo, doesn't it? Or not Hugo, but to 170th maybe, 180th.
I don't know if it goes that far.
180th, then there's that spot just south of there where it crosses the Hard Creek Trail that has a bridge in Hugo that they're potentially getting closed.
Down here.
So you would basically have a connection down to 180th, but there just north of 180th, there's a connection up to 61 again, so.
But you still have the railroad.
And then 190th.
Yeah.
Trail.
But Ryan, would you.
Is that where the bus line is going?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, the express line.
Express line.
So Ryan, would, do you think, I mean, there's some chance to get some access between the Parkway and 190th, right? Because right now there isn't.
I know there was some talk of that, yes.
There's a gravel road all the way.
I mean, access to 61.
The high speed bus thing wasn't going to be on that.
Isn't that one they want to run it?
I know, but is there a possibility?
But it's never going to be reality.
If you have business, you know.
They're running it to Whitehead and then.
I just don't think MINDOT would support that, but then you're going to have to also get a access permit from Washington County Railroad Authority.
Yeah, I, you know, well, I agree with your idea, Ben. I I think we would run into a problem with access points. So I I like the idea of nodes. So, I, I like the idea of nodes, you know, and figure out what the spacing is before we, now. And so, you put those nodes spaced out enough, and so that, but you, you can make them big enough that, you know, you can have shared driveways and shared access and things like that. But, but I, I agree that we need to do something all the way down the corridor.
And on both sides of the corridor, yeah.
Agreed.
Okay, so moving on to number three. To then, you know, that's, that's general business. So, it's, you know, it could be written a little different flavor. I don't recall exactly why we distinguish that different than mixed use. Do you remember, Ryan? But.
Business.
You know, that could, that could be, you know, the absence of residential, perhaps, just for a different, a different flavor. But would you agree that we want to have also some sort of commercial use on that east side of 61?
Yes.
And then also, if I could jump back to, so, what I'm hearing from you is that you'd like to see, like, kind of a mixed, a similar mixed use within, within some proximity of a, of a potential, you know, with closer proximity to interchange down here. So, within the city, some sort of mixed use that would be maybe a thousand feet or something that, you know, kind of a, more of a retail use, to, you know, take advantage of some, some proximity and visibility from the freeway.
I want that area to be as flexible as possible, because we're talking about 2040, and what, what we don't want to do is run into zoning issues, you know, if, if somebody wants to develop down there. So, whatever provides us the most flexibility is what I would recommend.
Okay.
And you just say mixed use, or is it anything?
Well, I mean, it depends how we, we define it. I mean, we have mixed-use zoning districts now, and that's, that would be something of a template of how we'd describe the mixed-use, future land use. But I think, you know, it would, we'd probably not allow, you know, something that was, you know, heavy industrial or manufacturing, you know, on that, on that, on that scale.
I mean, have you said mixed-use commercial? Or, I'm a little confused with when you.
Well, mixed use usually is some combination residential and commercial. And it could be, you know, vertical, it could be horizontal, you know, just next to each other. But it, it does provide a good bit of flexibility. And, but it also, you know, doesn't, you know, often include the more, you know, heavy, heavy uses, more like, like industrial, ones that could produce those, you know, impacts on neighbors that maybe people don't want to live by, for instance, you know, where there's a lot of retail, or, you know, there's a lot of commercial that are offices, medical, that a lot of people wouldn't mind living near, because they don't have much of a real impact.
Donovan, all these land use color designations, are these Minnesota state standards? Or is these just city standards, or what are?
No, they're somewhat standardized for Met Council, so they can kind of aggregate them and do broad comparisons. But the city's not bound to these, and, you know, how we, how we then categorize them, you know, how we describe them, similarly, is, is, you know, a local decision.
Donovan, I think when we have the overall comp plan discussion, I think it would be helpful if we had a summary of what each one of, what it means in each one of these districts. Because, you know, downtown mixed use versus the mixed use, versus mixed-use industrial. I think I can get, I, I know the difference between them, but I think it would be helpful to make sure that we're all on the same page and understand what we're talking about for each area.
Certainly. Yeah, the, I mean, the, the main intent tonight was simply to have, kind of, begin the discussion, but I get the, get the broad, kind of, public service areas, you know, where do you want to extend the utilities?
So, highway commercial versus general business, what, what defines one versus the other?
Highway commercial is over by, is over by Walmart, Target area.
Okay.
I mean, I could, I can pull up the, you know, take me a minute, but I could pull up the.
Just kind of a, you know, quick, you know, what, what defines one versus the other?
You're saying highway commercial versus general?
General business. I mean, I'm looking at Highway 61, and, and you've got, you've got general business there. But yet, you know, I'm looking in the color designations, there's a highway commercial, but I don't see that, at least on this part of the map, and I'm just, you know, is highway commercial something that should be?
Up 35.
Yeah. So, I mean, right now, that this, generally, the highway, pretty much synonymous with the highway commercial zoning right now. That's always the case with future land uses and zoning. But those are more pretty space. I mean, well, it's, they're focused on the highway, obviously. The, you know, the, that's where they have the larger, like, bigger users, as far as like used car dealerships, hotels, our, our big box retail. So, they're, you know, really dependent on high traffic volumes. You know, as we noted earlier tonight, you know, the visibility with, to the, to the highway is really important. And so, but so it's larger users and, you know, just higher traffic volumes dependent. That, and then with general business, where we have it, you know, these few places along 61, and actually, this right here, this kind of southern part of, you know, where the city center is now, that also is that general business, and then it's also labeled here. So, you interpret that as more, more small, smaller scale. And, you know, not, not as auto, you know, not, depending on those, on those high volumes of cars.
So, like a large, you know, tip-up building, like the one that was just put up in the Hugo Lina Lakes exit, something like that, just a, you know, big concrete warehouse. It's, to me, that is an industrial. I mean, it's, it's, it's a building, it's got office and, and storage area. What, what zoning would you consider?
I would see that more in, in the industrial, because I can imagine that there might be, you know, there might be design standards where you maybe wouldn't want to put that on Highway 61.
Like UPS wants to put up a 100,000 square foot concrete warehouse.
Team Vantage.
Or team, yeah, Team Vantage, well, but they are a factory, I guess, so, but yeah, same type of thing.
Same type of building, but not, but instead, they're, they're doing, you know, office space, if you will, or have like three business, three or four businesses that go on that same thing, and then maybe have some office space, but they're not actually constructing or building something, if you will.
Yeah. To me, industrial, you know, factory, you know, the old smoke stacks, that type of thing, you know, I'm not, you know, or, you know, odors, or something else, you know, what, you know, something that could be, I guess, offensive versus.
Like a slaughterhouse or something.
Yeah.
Catwills increase yesterday.
Might feel that.
I said no.
You know, you drive down 35, I can't remember the name of the, in Iowa, you know, the Tones Factory there, you know, that makes spices. I mean, you know, it just, it permeates the whole area. I don't know if I'd, you know, it's, it's there, and I mean, it's a great business in, in that community, but, boy, you know, that's not something that, I don't know, a lot of people wouldn't want to be next to anyway, depending on what spice they're running that day or whatever, but.
So, you're saying that, to be clear, that that wouldn't be what you'd like to see in that, that, that mixed, I'm sorry, in the general business area?
The mixed-use industrial, I mean, I would like to see, you know, mixed use, I, I, that's why I'm asking, you know, if these are standardized designations from the state or whoever, then we need to look at something. If they're our own designations, I mean, I would like to see, you know, commerce, commercial, business park, you know, warehouse, storage, light manufacturing, I mean, there's a lot of names that can be on it, but, you know, to me, industrial is the smoke stacks and asphalt factories and, you know, the whatnot, so.
And I, I agree with what Ben said earlier, that the use of industrial in that area implies something that I don't think, based on the discussion that we had earlier this evening, I think that the entire council was in agreement, that that's not what we're, that's not exactly the same thing that we're talking about.
Okay, I.
Yeah. I, I understand.
Mixed use, because I'm, I think, you know, we still, I think the idea around that is we have some really large plots of land, and, and it's, you know, it wouldn't be maybe, you know, they don't have smokes, I mean, Team Vantage, I mean, doesn't have smoke stacks, but it's, you know, it's high value, good job.
Right, you know, and, and I mean, I would, I would welcome a Team Vantage business to put up a large building there, but it's just, how do we, how do we present this to the public? You know, the Met Council, you know, they, they deal with these every day, so they're gonna look at it and understand it, but, you know, how are we presenting this properly to the public? So, you know, we don't hear 180th is gonna be all industrial, no, I don't want that factory next to me, because, no, that's not our intention. So, you know, that's where, you know, yeah, I'd, I'd like to see it just laid out better, at least, you know, that first 1,000 feet both, or whatever that, you know, reasonable footage is as, as business, you know, retail, and then more, you know, that business commercial, or business-to-business type thing. But, you know, how you put that on a comp plan to give to the Met Council, and how you put that to present to the public, so that they understand what everybody's intention is, anyway.
That's why he gets the big bucks to figure that out.
I'd like to move on to the next discussion point. Now, this was, you know, this whole map was, you know, put forth by the, you know, we, kind of as a, the Comp Plan Task Force who met, who met in 2017, pulled this together, and this kind of, kind of a, I don't know, this colored, slightly colored area was what, you know, a land use that we kind of defined as this, you know, future urban residential, or open house, people said they didn't like urban there, and, but, as a word. But the big question before us now is, currently, this is in the agriculture zoning district, it's not within the MUSA. And if I, I should just back up a second, these, all these areas, with the exception of the number two area, all these areas we're discussing are outside the current MUSA boundary. And with our community designation from Met Council, it's called residual, resident, residual, rural, rural, rural residual. You know, they're saying they really don't want any, kind of, the guiding language is, you know, no more than one dwelling unit per 10 acres. And I'm saying that, listen, we want, I, I wrote to our sector rep and saying, listen, we'd like to change that, you know, this is, we're planning for 2040, and gave her, you know, some rough reasons why, and just kind of, you know, telegraphed that, that's something that, you know, we're gonna, we want to move forward with something different. But, but the one piece here I want to discuss is the, you know, which, so currently, this is one per 20 in this area, one, one dwelling unit per 20 acres, zoned agriculture. What's the council's feeling on, you know, extending cities, sewer to here in this 2040 plan? Or city services, really, in the 2040 plan horizon? Or do we keep it one per 20, or do we do it one per 10? Is it staged? You know, I have an idea that maybe this is all, you know, post-2040 development, and this is kind of the area in this, you know, in this, more in the southeastern area of the city, this is where we kind of keep more of the, you know, some agricultural uses and just more rural residential. With the exception, of course, is 184th Street there, that was, you know, kind of a cluster development. But I'd like to, you know, get some feeling from council on where you see the, the boundary line being.
So, a question on that Zone 5 that you have there? And the border for that on the east, is that Harrow Avenue?
Harrow is further east, I believe. It, we kind of lined it up because of how it just kind of matched this up here.
That's Harrow Avenue.
That is, okay. I stand corrected?
That makes more sense.
So.
And then it ends at kind of at the DNR own land, you know, the.
Yeah.
Harvard Creek area.
I mean, Harrow, I don't, again, why would we end that designation right on a street? Why wouldn't we go over halfway again, so we don't have, you know, one side of the street one way, one of the other? I mean, Harrow's probably one of the busier-traveled dirt roads there is in, in the city. And, you know, with the, what is it, the, you know, the developments coming up on Harrow farther up there, I think, you know, if you, if you look at that T of Harrow and County Road 50, both sides of that has really, really good potential for developments, not one and 10, or one and 5, but, you know, two and, two and an acre, or something like that. So, that, that Zone 5, I guess my suggestion would be to, to move it all the way over real close to the green, anyway.
So, go, go east of Harrow, some, some.
At least one, one section.
One section all the way over here?
At least, in, in my opinion, and, or maybe, you know, up County Road 50, south of County Road 50, one section or something like that. But that way, we have that, that area, not just on one side of the street. Because most developers that are gonna come in, you know, are.
They're on both sides of the street.
Yeah, and they're, you know, they're putting their cul-de-sacs in and, and maximizing out what they have. If you just have that one section, you know, they're just gonna put a cul-de-sac in. They're not gonna put a road in to pick up the next one.
I also think that if we're looking at that Zone 1, you know, being a main drag, you know, out to 35W, I think that Zone 4 and Zone 5 may actually develop sooner because of that. So, I'm not sure that I would zone it as outside the 2040 plan at this point.
And do we have an agreement around that, that density that Mayor mentioned? One per two for residential? Kind of a.
If, if the sewer and water is available, then the density should be much higher than that.
Yeah, I agree with you, Sam. But it's, it's also, I mean, if a developer comes in and buys 80 acres and wants to put, he just comes in with a PUD for that piece of property, correct?
Yeah, which.
Wants to put, if he buys 80 acres and wants to put 80 houses or 150 houses on it, that's where the city works with them. They're not just gonna come and say, well, this is one and two, and you can only put 12 houses there, and that's it.
I understand.
But the, what I'm seeing happening is, we need that density, and.
It doesn't make sense.
When we don't have the services there, what's happening now is, they're, they're selling it off, you know, one house on 10 acres, one house on 5 acres, and that cuts out the ability for us to get our roads paved, ability to do the services that they need, because it just, you can't afford to do it when you've got that one, yeah.
And a developer's not gonna want to do it at 10 acres.
That's right, right. So, it's, we're not gonna get sewer and water extended where we needed anything like that, so.
Well, one, one, one consideration with zoning it, I mean, you're basically talking about like MXR1 zone. If you're, you know, doing full density with, you know, public services. One consideration is, is utility staging, you know, that, you know, it could be this kind of a different, kind of a future residential district in the future land use plan, but with some staging, the idea that, you know, in a future time, the city would under, would, you know, as, as, as utilities came closer, then the city would actually zone it at that more, that MXR1.
It's, it's getting there, it's getting closer. I mean, if we're looking out at 2040 right now, that's all gonna be developed, I think, before, or somebody's gonna want to develop it before.
I think it'll be developed before then.
Yeah, I mean, and, and just like right at the top of number five, that's where Salverde's has, you know, huge amount of acreage. And, you know, that's gonna be prime to develop if we can provide the services to that. And, you know, we're looking north and. if we can provide the services to that. And, you know, we're looking north and, and we've done that. But, you know, the, we got to start looking at the growth here because it's, it's a great area. And, yeah, if something does click on one eightieth, it's, it's just going to make all that land a lot more accessible and valuable and desirable.
And that area is very convenient to the schools and stuff like that. So it's, it's really a great spot.
Yeah. I mean, you look at the density on, you know, the, the other side with, you know, where the, where Leela is and, you know, Hargrove Creek, I mean, you know, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of houses. I mean, it's a mirror image. I mean, it's, it's a half a mile away. Why aren't we planning the same thing on that side?
You're exactly right.
Well, that is consistent. We, there is one property owner who owns about a hundred and twenty acres. He just inherited from his mother who showed up for one of the open houses and he was advocating for just the type of vision that you're now expressing.
I think I was here at that meeting.
Yeah, yeah. So that was the, for me, the main discussion points. I want to also open up for Ryan, if you want to talk about staging anyway, or any kind of questions that you need answered or you have.
Just getting the zoning here is, our future land use plan is very critical to the plan, especially if we want to make a April, so what I'm looking for, what are we doing in April?
Public hearings.
Public hearing. So, you know, there's a lot of charts that are tied into these areas and the densities and how you show that and describe that, that the Met Council's going to be looking for. So obviously we want to narrow that down. I'm not the most competent in zoning, so you guys tell me, but then I know then what to look up for the density, then that's how we figure out sewer and water, right? And traffic trips and generation, something like that. But I just need to be narrowed on what we're going to do here so things can move forward with the plan, all the other attributes related.
How does this affect the, the issue of someday having to drill another well down in that area? You know, we got to have a spot for that too. So, I mean, what we're talking about here, is that going to affect that at all? Or are we going to be on the other side of the highway or?
No, that'll, obviously at the time when you move forward, you size things accordingly. We'll have a better handle, you know, once this is finalized of what ultimately the capacity will be, but it's not going to happen at once.
Of course not.
So, talking about utilities and staging and planning ahead, since it is a comp plan, switching gears a little bit from this area, but Clear Lake and Forest Lake. Forest Lake, we have sewer going all the way around, but we don't have water. Clear Lake, there's a huge density, everybody's got wells. How do we plan ahead to bring them water? I mean, eventually those wells are going to start failing. Other thing, you know, I mean, each, is there a way?
They don't want water.
You're going to run into a lot of people that don't want water. But, you know, is there, I mean, is there a logical course? Because, yeah, you know, when do you do it? When, or do we never do it? I mean, we got water going up Highway ninety-seven.
Let's just talk about the residential properties on the west side of Forest Road right here. Pretty easy, you know, that about up Clear Lake. If you guys want it, just initiate a project like you would a street project. Call for just a public open house, talk about this is something that we're going to pursue and you would assess this project, right? So you, I mean, you would go through that upfront, right? There are times when we do street projects where we know if it's just a simple, short connection to fix a missing link, we, we certainly do. But to bring in national services and offer at that time to hook up, now communities have, you know, brought the curb stop to them and you have by said date to hook up, right? The stuff that they worked on individually. And then at the time when they hook up, then they're required to abandon their well. But then there's also people that wanted a service, you know, we bitted it, you know, as an alternate to the project. Either or, they're drilling new service right up in their basement, you know, we can do that. So we've done in other projects. So they hook up instantly with the project. But that's, if you guys want that, or if there's a demand out there in the neighborhood, I know the neighborhood north of Forest Hills Golf Course wants some water because they have well issues, the smell and the color and the taste of their, their water in that area.
Yeah, that water's so hard you can't stand the smell.
And we're getting close with Chestnut Creek. But certainly, there would be a nice loop between Chestnut Creek going up Harrow and then coming in Castlewood Golf Course townhomes because that's a dead end. Just think how that helps your water redundancy and your flowage through there and your pressure and all that. So it's just never been wanting to take it farther east of Harrow Avenue. Your water main doesn't go east of Harrow Avenue in Forest Lake, which so many people can't comprehend. But you got all that density.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's.
If you did an assessment project with that, your assessments would be relatively low because you have so many hookups.
But the, I thought we had the conversation with Aaron and the other city attorney, that if they already have wells, you could run water through, but you can't force them to hook up.
That's, I, I can't answer legally.
I, I guess. No, Bridget, that's, that's Bridget determination, yes.
But I mean, the other, the attorney before Bridget.
Oh, but Bridget echoes that.
Yeah, other communities.
She says, because to me, we'll have religious reasons.
So if that's the case, you would go through these public meetings at first, right? So if you got a lot of appeals that didn't want the project, then why would you move forward in those neighborhoods? Wouldn't you want to move forward in the neighborhoods that want to participate and okay with their assessment? Get them done. And then over time, then you start dealing with the ones that weren't an easy pathway.
Well, I, I just want to bring it up as part of the comp plan. And as far as utilities and sizing things go, that, you know, we can't just forget about those areas. And I don't want.
That's important to know if you want to move east of Harrow, because that was specifically directed not to study, part of the water study in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen.
I would, I would say we definitely should look at moving east of Harrow. I think anywhere, anywhere we're going to have a MUS line, we should have water. I, I just, it doesn't make sense to me to have, you know, providing sewer to all these people, you know, fifty years ago when they did it, and not put a water pipe in at the same time. I mean, it just, yeah, you know, let's, let's put half a road in and not the other half or, I, it.
Yeah, let's pave half the road.
Yeah. And we've got, you know, a lot of areas, you know, like Ashback Point. I mean, they put that great big huge development, nice, everything else. And, you know, they all had individual wells, you know, but, you know, why? You know, let's, let's hook up the water. I mean, they were close enough even then, I think, to be able to hook up to it. But, you know, hindsight versus foresight. But, yeah, definitely, we should start looking going east.
On the lake, just keep in mind though, if you're running a single pipe and not looping it back into anything, you're going to lose a lot of pressure out that way. And your water quality starts going down a little bit because your, your usage and your flowage to the pipe is pretty stagnant at the end down there.
Yeah.
Yep.
So in terms of solutions to some of that times is additional, opening the hydrants, flushing the hydrants, you know, stuff like that. So there, there'd be more maintenance with that if you got so far out. But I do see that, you know, there's some, there's a significant chunk to pick up that could be looped pretty easily.
Well, and getting it in the comp plan and actually getting it in the ground are going to be two different things. But if it's in the comp plan and, you know, ten years from now, five years from now, and, you know, developers coming through, that, you know, that can, can get accomplished easier anyway. But yeah, especially, you know, as we were talking, you know, going south on Harrow there, if those developments start taking off, why wouldn't we be bringing sewer and water to that and, and making, you know, three to ones or whatever instead of, you know, five or ten acre lots out of it? Anything else, Ryan? You need any other? Sam, Ed, you guys have any other input?
The only thing I would suggest is we adjourn. I'll make that a motion.
For the week. I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.